I think we're doing just about everything.
They're comfortable with their buffer?
I mean.
No.
Naturally, like law, because is the town by law a fifty-foot buffer?
Fifty foot.
Fifty foot. So, your original plan was twenty-five?
But we were, we were able to work with the other solar developer up behind the Rougeos to give some of the residents who were gonna be so close and I can see how close you people are gonna be. And they worked with us and, you know, they, they made sure the residents were as happy as we could make them.
Right.
I mean, none of them were happy, but they were happier.
Right, and I, I think we felt a little bit more comfortable after the site walk.
Right.
And actually, we always think there's more that can be done, you know, like you just told us now that the site pad would be moved further.
Again, we.
Right, so we didn't know that. You know, seeing these things, it's hard for us to visualize.
Sure, sure. I don't wanna even watch it, I because this ain't.
Right, right.
A meeting for it, but, you know, take a look at the other solar farms, drive around and look what the entrances look like. They look like hell, okay? Do you want that next to your house? No. So, you're gonna have to fight for these things. We, you know, we gotta work with everybody, but we work for you, we don't work for him.
Right, and, you know, I had mentioned the site, a couple of sites that I've already been to, how awful they looked. I don't know if I told you about the little west wall. Absolutely awful.
Your home looks beautiful, sir, from the street.
It's thirty-eight years of our work.
Right, and when you're driving down the road, it's nice to look at beautiful homes like that in our town. You don't wanna look at a ugly entrance and then look at your beautiful home, you know? So maybe you can work with these people about to have a nice looking entrance.
Chris and I have discussed that all time.
Yeah, and I have some alternative things that, again, that you haven't seen yet, which will be on the plans.
Right, yeah, we wanna work with you.
Which are gonna dress up the entrance, you know, including like a nicer gate at the entrance to prevent people from driving in. More like a wooden kind of farm gate at the entrance.
It looks nice, yeah, did you see what this home looks like?
Yeah, black vinyl, we have a bunch of landscaping and then kind of like a revegetating the understory of the forest along the northern edge where Mr. Sylvia, Sylvia's property and Gloria and Bo's property is increasing the buffer to what was previously shown, and again, that was an error on my part. Someone had drawn a tree line wrong and was opening a twenty-five-foot strip of trees being left and that was an error. And so, it's gonna be in excess of fifty feet, I think it's closer to eighty natural and with a double row, the green giant arborvitae's are pretty close to a hundred feet of a vegetated buffer. In addition, the pad's gonna be moved, you know, not to the very back of the field, but further than it was in the site walk and with the screening, we're talking about the location that was observed during the site walk would not be observed from your edge and between that and maybe trying to clean up the gate that goes back to the rear of your property.
Again, we've got to see.
Yeah, understandable, understandable.
One's your point.
So, we're not trying to hold you up.
Okay, we don't wanna hold you up.
Yes, I look forward, as you do, to seeing the plans and having plenty of time to review them, so we need to make a motion to continue the public hearing until November twenty-eighth.
Do we have a time, Mr. Chair?
Six P M.
I'll make that motion in a second.
On the favor?
Aye.
We'll be here.
Did you find out about Audrey Lane and things about Audrey Lane?
The reality of it, as far as the paperwork.
That's what, they've, they've got the title search going on, they've sent, their attorney has sent their legal opinion to the town council. And the town council will either agree or disagree and then we'll see what happens from there. All right? Yep, November twenty-eighth, six P M.
Have a Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
If you need anything, just let me know.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next item is a minor site plan review of seven fifty-seven Williams Street. That is in here?
Yeah, it's right there.
This?
Yep. It's, it's double-sided plus there's a third sheet. Just the sheet though, please presenting, he also wrote this letter to present to the board's arguing.
Okay, so, letter, I will read it to everyone here. Dear Planning Board, I'd like your approval on a minor, minor site plan, the site plan submitted to show how, show that I would like to move my office for Northside Garage Inc., now located at two hundred Williams Street to seven fifty-seven Williams Street. Initially, I'd like to ask the board to waive the fee for the site plan review for reasons of being a minor site plan. Thanks for your time. So, two hundred Williams Street is where it is now.
Yes.
And what is he, what do you use it for?
It's a, uh, used license.
Okay, and you wanna move it to seven fifty-seven? And that is north, south?
South.
South, and it's still in the business district, okay.
You're at seven sixty-seven, right?
Right, I'm right next door.
Oh, okay, okay, so your home is seven sixty-seven?
Yeah, my home is seven sixty-seven. Right now, I have a mobile home at seven fifty-seven. And I'd like to use that for my office.
That's good, the, the mobile home's gonna be the office.
Yes.
And what's at seven forty-five?
That's my neighbor, I just included.
Okay, yeah, I just.
You're gonna have cars on that wall, Paul?
Yes.
And what's on it now?
Mobile home.
Just the mobile home?
Are you showing parking for eight vehicles? You have parking for eight vehicles, is it?
Yes. That's for you know, six of sales, two guest space.
So, is your.
Is that what they allowed now on your, is that what they allowed now on your permit, eight?
Uh, six.
Six?
But I'm gonna have eight parking spots for employees and twenty additional parking.
Oh, so you're gonna have six vehicles?
Yeah, six vehicles, eight parking spots.
We can do that without telling the neighbor?
Well, that's what my question is, is the neighbor aware that all of a sudden he's gonna have a, a, a car, say, an auto sales next to his house?
Have you talked to the neighbors at all?
That's a residential law.
I haven't talked to them, and I will go talk to them. I have a very good neighborhood, and we all help each other out. I don't foresee any problem if they do have any concerns, if they want to make the concerns. Having the license is a compliment to my trucking company, I've all kinds, and I sell it through the auction, so most of my volume is sourced.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with, with it being a minor site plan review, but I'm not fine with voting to approve it because of the lack of input from neighbors. For instance, the folks that were just here about the solar.
Yep.
They obviously had reasons to be concerned.
Okay.
And no doubt, the people, the neighbors of your property would similarly be concerned, I would think.
Yep.
So, again, I, I don't know, we've considered these minor site plans reviews in the past.
Is there a public hearing, want it for a minute?
Uh, we're in a public hearing now, or are we discussing?
My question is, is that business zone?
It's in the over way.
It's in the over way, yeah, all of Williams Street.
Yeah, it's yours.
So, major or site plan reviews, public hearing is required, mine is not, because if you recall, we did one for Tom, for the parking lot.
Yeah, that's right.
We did not have a public.
And we did a minor site plan review for the, the honey shop at the corner of Williams and.
Yeah, what are they building next to that now?
I don't know.
Storage supposedly.
Oh, really?
Storage?
Yeah.
For that big shop?
For the honey.
It's a big storage, I was gonna say, big.
No.
Storage is bigger than the, bigger than the shop.
It's in the blue book, I think, Harry.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that a business that's, uh, buttoned to residents, the residents can acquire fencing, uh, different things like that. If they want to, even after it's in place, just as a back to the business next to residents.
You're probably right, we're looking to see if it requires a, a public hearing, I don't, I don't think it does.
With a butter notice.
With conditions as deemed appropriate within sixty days of its receipt.
It is a makeshift, so, it's allowable.
It's allowable.
As I said, I don't wanna come in and interrupt the neighborhood, most of my business is wholesale, I have to have a business so I can buy the, the whole license. Any concerns they have are more than me.
Are you gonna be paving this area here too?
No.
No?
So, then there's the application for special permit or variance, so I think that's where a public hearing would kick in if he was applying for a special permit or a variance.
Right.
Not sure what realm that would fall under if it does.
Think, you still have to go, don't you have to transfer the license, follow the new address, or did you do that?
No, I haven't yet because I talked to the chairman, he told me to come here first, get approved here, and then go to something.
So, it doesn't need a special permit or anything?
And as you mentioned, when the license gets transferred, they will, they will notify their neighbors. And the selectmen, the selectmen will be reviewing whether stipulations, what stipulations would be there, but I know for a fact.
And that's when the neighbors get notified.
Move the dealership, it will, they, they won't be notified.
Yeah, my, my main concern is the neighbors not being blindsided, so.
Right.
So, it sounds like we can approve this site plan, but we're not approving its use for businesses, we're just approving the site plan and you're getting the business license there. That then triggers a butter.
Well, what a selectman has a hearing.
The board of selection had a hearing.
I don't wanna see, if you're not approving it for, to operate a business there, what is the rule?
That it's a minor.
That it's a.
Well, first, I wanna make a motion to.
Consider it a minor?
Consider it a minor.
I second it.
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, it is definitely a minor site plan review.
Okay.
And, but we're not approving any business, we're just approving the plan for the business.
Yeah, so I would make a motion to approve the plan, but as far as the juris, is out of our jurisdiction for.
Correct, correct, this is the first step.
Yeah.
So, I will second it.
I was also asking a lot of you, we waived the fee for being a minor.
How much is the fee?
Five hundred.
Five hundred for one to ten parking spaces and then a thousand for a building.
I'm not reconstructing, reconstructing buildings or anything like that.
My major concern with waiving the fee is the next guy's gonna want the fee waived, and the next guy's gonna want the fee waived.
Yeah, but it's, it's in the writing that on a minor one, we can ask for it on an individual basis, but I have no construction going on. It's only gonna be the approval. To see if I'm coming in with a major site plan, if I was doing a lot of asphalt, I mean.
So, you're not paving, you're just gonna make the garage into an office?
Right, not gonna be, you know, orange hairs there or anything, it's strictly just gonna be an office.
Well, we did waive the fee for the honey lady too, so.
Okay, see, and I didn't know that.
There you go.
I don't recall.
I'll make a motion to waive the fee.
On the favor?
Aye.
Forgive me, who seconded the motion for the minors?
I think I did.
Joe did?
Somebody jerked it.
I made, I made the motion.
You made the motion?
Yeah, on a second.
Sorry, thank you. And we're doing this on the condition that it's a site plan review, a minor site plan review, not permission to conduct business, correct?
Does that have an effect on when I go to the selectmen, they're sending me back here?
I don't think so.
Saying, well.
No.
I hope not.
We don't give business permits, they do. We, we do approve site plans for the business now.
This is my first time doing this.
Yeah, yeah, this is our first time in, on this board of having a business move down the street.
Nothing personal, but I, I just don't think it's right that we're approving anything without telling this neighbor, okay? I don't think we're doing the right thing.
We're not, we're not approving your business.
And we're, we're approving the site plan.
A minor.
Minor modification, period.
Right.
Other than that, it's out of our hands.
Right, and that is, Tom, I cannot move the dealership there without the selectmen notifying all of the neighbors and then coming to their meeting.
Right.
They're the ones in the neighborhood, so it's likely this first step before I can go to them.
Right, and, and obviously, it falls within the parameters of the planning board.
Right.
But this neighbor here, we don't know this guy, but we have to look up for him.
But they're gonna get notified.
Well, I hope so, right.
Probably let's stand procedure.
That's usually our work.
Well, you can't move the dealership.
I just hope that we, the planning board are making the right decision.
I understand.
Right, you know, nothing personal.
Not my concern, the neighborhood, I live in the neighborhood.
Right, oh, I know where you live, I know.
Any concerns they have, they'll be addressed to the selectmen, the selectmen will be able to put any conditions that they can help when the neighbors come in.
Right.
And they probably believe they got two neighbors over, not just one.
Yeah, I'm sure there's.
Right.
Right, so we're gonna be worried on that.
I did before, yeah, before I go to the next step.
Right.
For them to get notified.
We did not vote to approve the minor site plan, we voted to allow it to be reviewed as a minor site plan.
Oh, okay.
So, now, we need a motion or more discussion.
You made a, you made a motion to approve.
Yes.
We did, I didn't hear that.
With the condition of that it's not a pool of the, uh, business transfer, it's only a pool of the site plan.
We can't do that, it's, it's, it's the selectmen that does that.
Yeah, yeah.
A minor, a minor, uh, site plan.
I, I didn't, I didn't hear the, the motion, that's all.
Right, 'cause you're gonna transfer his license, you're gonna transfer your license, so you have to go in front of him.
Right, right, and they're gonna notify.
He'll tell you how many you can have, how many pockets.
Right, that's what I'm saying, sure, the neighbors, the neighbors, by neighbors, they're gonna get notified, but I can't even go to the selectmen to start the second.
Yeah, we just didn't, we just didn't vote, I guess, yet. Did we vote?
We did not vote to approve.
That is a minor.
Yes.
The motion may have been made, but remake, remake the motion.
I make a motion that this is a minor site plan review.
No.
No, no.
No, no, no.
We've already done that.
We've already determined that.
Okay, so.
To approve the site.
Oh, to approve the site plan.
The site plan.
Site plan.
Yes. So, why don't you make that motion?
So, move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, your next step is to go to the board of selectmen.
Okay, do I get any paperwork from here saying that, uh?
I will issue a memo saying that the board approved it.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. You'll see, you're here for me, I'll send you a copy.
All right.
And I need a vehicle, come up and see.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, our favorite neighborhood, an update on Center Street Woods Development. And are we updating the, the, the public, or is the public updating us, or both?
If I may speak to this one.
Please do.
Joe wants to speak. Joe and I were on the property on Monday eleven five with G Z A, uh, for the inspection for the new cost of complete. The owners, Fishby, I think is his name, and Matt Waghers and another fellow was there, and Charlie Mello showed up, Tom Ferry showed up. So, we had, we were trying to accomplish getting this thing done. I thought we had a good conversation, I don't believe we have the numbers yet for the new cost of complete.
No, I have not seen anything.
Some of the things we told them that day, they, before they gonna get a building permit, they would have to pay the liens on the properties. They would have to also pay any back taxes, and they would have to deposit funds sufficient to cover the new cost of complete if it was a higher amount. So, we all, we thought things were going well, and, but they made some phone calls, they were, did you get the impression they were gonna do this right away, right, to get that building permit? Well, I have since found out that, um, Matt Antonio came in yesterday and spoke with Kerry and also spoke with Mary Hathaway, and the impression that we have, he's not gonna pay these taxes. So, that, and the, he's not gonna pay the taxes and he's not gonna pay the liens. Their attorney, I guess, through Matt Antonio, am I correct?
Yes, he's not gonna pay, there's three lots, uh, two of the drainage lots he's going to pay, he said the third lot he is not going to pay.
The third lot was a twelve-acre lot that couldn't be built upon. Cause they waived the, see, I thought that was gonna come to the town originally.
I agree.
But it's not.
Who we going to?
Going to nobody, it's gonna stay unbuildable. I read the plan today, again.
Is it an empty lot?
It's an empty, unbuildable, twelve-acre lot, yes, so they have to pay taxes on it.
Yes.
It did not come to the town. I don't see anywhere where it did come to the town.
I haven't been able to find anything yet.
And according to what I read on.
But I thought Matt Antonio was not involved in this anymore. That was the impression I got when those three gentlemen were here the last time speaking to you.
If you read on the plan, the applicant, in the definition of the applicant.
Correct.
Goes to all heirs and new buyers and.
But who?
All these problems go to Joe Ferreira.
Is that Matt Antonio?
That's the fin, that's the guy that does the financing.
Who? I'm so sorry, I, I, who does Matt Antonio work for?
Well, he's gotta work for Joe Ferreira.
Okay. Who owns the street?
Joe Ferreira.
Who is going to maintain the street?
Joe Ferreira.
Are you asking, maintain the street for the time being, or? Just, in general, so.
Let me, let me read you another.
I'm sorry, can I continue, I, I.
I, I read the plan. Uh, the, that twelve acres is unbuildable for future development, that's in sixteen C on the plan.
Yes.
Uh, number nine, the storm water management system, this should be a concern.
Yes.
For you people, because it says it will remain forever private on the plan.
That's a problem.
And however.
Wasn't it still via way?
The, the applicant, who was Joe Ferreira, is responsible for maintenance until all nine homes have been conveyed.
Correct, correct, yep.
That includes the ponds.
Yes.
Now, we were, we also wanted a new H O A from him.
Yes.
Which we haven't received yet either.
Correct, 'cause the H O A right now is nonexistent and the fees that are being, we, nobody's being, so.
Right, nobody's being paid.
Because we don't own it yet.
Right.
But it's still, we're supposed to be putting money into a, a joint for future use, still, as soon as you purchase a home, you're supposed to be giving thirty dollars a month or whatever.
Correct.
Well, if we're giving it to Matt, I'm not giving it to Matt, because it'll disappear, so.
I know, it's not funny. Now, I don't know, uh, what's gonna come in on the cost of complete, but as I looked at the plan today, I saw there's supposed to be trees on both sides of the roads.
And lights.
Lights, and a wheelchair ramp down at the end of the street, uh, so.
Stone facade, correct, on the, on the bridge?
On the bridge, stone facade.
Yeah, I, I didn't find that yet, but, in any event.
Yeah, I recall, Joe asked me about it and I recall the same thing, that it was supposed to be a, this was, this goes back to.
Yeah.
Five years.
No, even if it's five years ago.
Oh, yeah.
What we were hoping, and, and I thought we were making progress, is that we, the town could get their money that's owed to them.
Mm-hmm.
We could start issuing building permits, so you guys can have your subdivision finished. But after this newest event.
So, I, I mean, our greatest concern to date is, you know, even after the homes are built. I understand there's supposed to be an H O A. But our concern has always been that the way it was implemented, the storm, even the stormwater, the way it was implemented from the beginning, if there's something catastrophic that happens, an H O A, the thirty dollars a month is not good to cover.
Right, absolutely not.
A catastrophic failure, which, which we've already seen technically, I guess that would be a failure. So, what happened then?
Gee, I don't know.
Well, if it's, if it's still privately owned.
Mm-hmm.
And it's owned by the homeowners association.
Mm-hmm.
Then the assessments change. That means that thirty can become three hundred dollars.
Okay, who would make that assessment?
Depending on, depending on the language of the homeowners association bylaws.
And there's no way for us to get this out of an H O A?
Uh, well, it's a conventional subdivision, so eventually, the street would become a public way. That is, the town would own it.
When would that happen?
If, that's just the street.
If we approve it.
Yes, but, but that's, that's when.
So, the, so the town would be respons, yeah, so the town would be responsible for the drainage in the street?
No.
No.
Just.
You're, you're responsible for everything above.
Yes, that's right.
We are responsible for things below. And this is my concern, that we're already having backup now on the street because it's all jammed up. All the pipes are jammed up from all the sandbags, silt and everything.
So, like I cleaned, I cleaned out the stormwater drains on Sunday of this, a past week, they were chock full of sand, I pulled the grate out, I took a shovel, the, the pipes are clogged with sand, sediment, leaves.
And that shouldn't be our responsibility.
So. No, I actually told them that they needed to clean those things up and, uh, they said they did. I did that, something.
No, that's not true, no one's been on that property since.
'Cause then my only concern is these, these fine gentlemen took an excavator from the back lot, drove it on the street and just shoot up the street.
Shoot up that too, yep.
Now the pavement's starting to come up in, in front of the hole.
Yeah.
I wonder if he picked up on that.
On Peter?
I mean, this hole's in the road.
Or Matt?
Yeah.
This happened before, before Matt was there?
Yeah, that's. Matt was here Monday.
No, this was happened two weeks ago, three weeks ago, when they decided they were gonna finish the back retention pond.
Right.
They're, instead of, you know, planning or whatever the case may be, instead of keeping the excavator, then putting it on a truck and moving it, they drove the excavator down the street and it tore up all of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And left dirt, like.
Have to pay more attention next time we go there.
But, but.
And I am, I'm also, now I'm starting to get a latched aid, because from the weight of the excavator driving on the street and vibration, my stone retention wall, that, my large stone is moving. And I'm not talking a couple of inches, we're talking, I've measured six. So, now I'm getting a latched aid, because every time they go down the street, it's, it's starting to, it's vibrating the entire neighborhood. Now, you're talking about your retaining wall. A wall on the side of the house, and I have a large rock, stone. If you're facing the back of your house on the right-hand side? You can see large gaps from where the stone has now slipped forward. I don't think that's from the road, I think it's when they were working. Whatever. Yeah, that's, that's what I think, from the road. It's on both sides, though.
I have to check my, my, my. But, I mean, the street is a problem.
Wow, so much for that.
Can you, uh, will you allow us to go on your property when you're not there?
I have, I have cameras, I will see you, but yes.
Oh, okay.
You can go on mine anytime you want as well and check my retaining wall because.
Yeah, I, I try not to trespass.
But now the concern is that, we have the storm we had, there's actual ponding going on because there's no place for the water to go. Because now all that silt and sand has gathered and no one has come to clean that up.
Is it, it's ponding right at the catch basin?
It's not catching, it's making big puddles.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So, like the front is still the same problem, if, if you could draw by day today, the whole front, before you go over the bridge, is completely flooded, where it's getting actually into the hole on the right-hand side, if you have fault to pull it, the right-hand side hole, it's starting to encroach on that property, all the water.
And it's supposed to be gone within seventy-two hours, correct? Because it's supposed to go into the pipe and back to the, to the retention pond. The pipe's too high, can't get in there, the water can't get in.
So, what's the next one? Is this, is this, I'm sorry, is it, is, is this the pipe that they just finished installing? No, 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 so you know where the bridge? Yeah. There's a pipe that runs from, from the right hand, yeah, from the right-hand side of the bridge into the stormwater. Okay. That pipe is about eight or nine inches too high from ground level, so that whole pond, that whole right-hand side, if you look, it's all wooded, it, it fills with water. So, where lot one will have a problem at some point, because all that water's gonna rush into. But last Monday, when we were there, we didn't see any signs of any water there, standing water, actually. It stays there for a long time, so.
Yeah, because it has some place to go.
And if you draw by day, like even tonight, if, if tomorrow morning, it, it's dead.
Okay, I, I don't know if you noticed, there is a pipe abouts the middle of the bridge.
Yep, too high.
That, it is, but that pipe doesn't go anywhere other than there is, under the road, there is a drainage, underground drainage there, that, you know.
The way it looked like on the plan to me, that pipe is tied into the stormwater, which is supposed to bring the water back to the retention pond.
Not this particular pipe.
Not the one in between the, in the middle of the bridge?
No, that one does, there's.
Was that carry over to the other side?
No, it, it, it drains in the, into the ground underneath the road.
Joe, you're kidding me, right?
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Oh, all right, then that's not working.
No, it's not working. No, it's not working. It's a problem.
There is a pipe on the east side.
Which, which is, which is okay, which is okay.
It's just, it's not working.
We, but this is what I was told, I, we, that's one of the reasons why, uh, we asked Tom, uh, Faris, Ferry to go there. And, and for other reasons as well, but that particular one, I, I said, so where's that pipe going? He goes, there's a drain underneath.
It's like a drywall?
A drainage underneath, prior, years ago, we did not approve.
So it was a swamp?
No.
No, if you go back to Google Maps, the place is a swamp.
Years ago, the drainage was, was not, um, help me out here.
Uh-huh.
Uh.
It was not.
Training? No, no, it, it, wrong, of all people, you know that. All the drainage was approved below grade.
Yes, okay.
Okay, not above grade, right now, it's opened detention, uh, detention ponds or whatever.
Yeah.
Before, it used to be underground.
Okay.
And that's what that is there, there is one that actually is supposed to be underneath the road. Whether it's working or not, I don't know, it's not working, so then.
Okay, well, that's.
I, I don't believe that either.
Then they, they have to make it work, that's all there is.
And here's the other thing, like the, the bridge is cracking and if you go by there, cutting and tasting little.
So we noted that.
Well, we, we noted that and I made a, I made a suggestion to them that we ba- that they backfill the foundation, that, that concrete.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
On the outside as much as it is on the inside.
Okay.
We also called the, um, the conservation to go out there and he says, as long as you don't interfere with the wetlands, it'll be fine, but if you do, you have to file.
We're gonna look at the plan because I believe the bridge is in the wetlands, wetlands go right up to it.
Uh, who, if I, so like, like I'm cleaning out the storm drains on, on Sunday, so when I find a excavator, uh, oil filter draining into the stormwater catch basin, what do I do then? Do I leave it there? Do I call? Who, who do I?
Take a picture.
Okay.
Tell conservation commission.
What's he draining?
He changed the oil on the excavator, he decided to drain the oil filter into the catch basin.
Oh shit, uh, did you get it on camera?
I, it's probably still there, I left it though.
Oh, you got it?
It's there, no, no, I left it, I left the whole thing, the canister and everything there, I, I didn't know what to do.
He didn't get on camera, he was cleaning up the flood basin and saw the oil filter and.
Wow.
It's probably still there.
Oh.
It just get better with that, yeah, it's getting better and better by the minute.
So, I, I guess where we're at. Um, policy in the town. Is that until such time, they're in good standing with the town, meaning no taxes, no liens, they don't get a building permit?
Okay.
There we go.
So Mr. Ferry's been nice enough to have his highway committee, uh, ki- highway guys plow our property, our road, because that wasn't happening either, so.
And he was billing?
We're, we're billing now.
Right, so is that gonna continue probably? Great.
The, we have a bylaw in town that after four inches of snow, we go out and plow with permission or not.
Perfect, I appreciate it.
And the, uh, owners of the subdivisions that aren't, haven't been approved yet are aware of this, so.
I'm sorry, I'm just confused about one thing and I apologize because I know, I tend to make a.
Yeah.
Me too.
I'm, I'm hung up on the, on the subdivision thing, uh, the HOA thing. So, when we. When we bought our homes, it was to some Stephen Lang person was the in joint, so that's been now transferred to Ferreira?
He's the only one left.
Out of, when the development was.
What they told us on Monday, that Joe Ferreira has an HOA, he just hasn't turned it in.
That's what we.
Didn't they say that?
What is that?
Yeah, and, and, and. What I think, I think what you, you, what you should do is probably talk to an attorney about this because we, we can't. I don't think we can do anything for you in the, in that aspect, yeah.
As far as the HOA?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right now, in our records, the homeowners association that we have on file is the one with Stephen Lang.
Yes.
Your original declaration.
And Joe Ferreira's on that?
No.
He bought the subdivision.
No, he bought the si- subdivision from him and at that time he was supposed to transfer it over and then that, he becomes the new HOA trustee.
So there's another thing we told them before they get a building permit, we want a valid HOA, legal, I haven't seen one yet.
That's what he's been requesting. Recorded, recorded HOA.
Well, I have a feeling what's gonna happen is we're gonna see new buyers because those three guys are gonna walk.
Those three guys are gonna back out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they'd have more than they could chew, I think.
Well, I don't think people are honest with themselves.
Yeah.
No, they weren't.
And I, I mean, they're not bad guys, I don't, just, so, the good news is he got some things fixed for Ferri, Joe Fer.
I think they're over their heads. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, according to them, Joe Fer is supposed to pay them for whatever they do.
And wow. Um, so is, at any time, are we going to see Joe Ferreira?
Probably not.
Or is Matt Antonio always gonna be speaking on his behalf, even though Matt Antonio was not part of this anymore?
I think your guess is as good as ours.
Well, Kerry said today, we have a document that authorizes Joe.
Matt.
Joe.
Matt.
Matt Antonio to speak on behalf of the company.
Yeah. Which.
Yeah. He doesn't show up either, so.
All right, well, good to know.
I know we didn't help you, but.
No, no, I mean, it's good information, I mean, we're just gonna have to keep. At it, it's too bad they cut down those two lots though.
I know.
Mm-hmm.
Cause now it looks like ass. And we can hear the traffic.
Yeah.
And then the water is starting to, the trees aren't there to take the water in.
It's really too bad and, and you know what, to be perfectly honest, conservation should say to Joe Ferreira, put some trees back.
Put some trees back.
Because you weren't supposed to cut down lot two. You are only approved to cut down lot one, so conservation should go after him and make him put trees back up.
They, they do what they want and ask for forgiveness later.
Yeah, and so it's just a shame.
You can't get the guy to do anything, so.
Right?
Yeah.
We should have channel ten.
You can't even get him to show up at the meeting.
Yeah, channel ten would be a good thing to call, I would.
Yeah.
It's, it's a shame that the town of Dyton can't help you. Uh, it's just too much of a story.
Yeah, you can't.
You guys, you can't wait this out.
You can't tell the story in three minutes.
Can't.
You want, uh, once we get the cost of complete, you want a copy of it, please?
Please.
If she's here, if she's here doing a report.
The channel ten wouldn't believe it.
No. And do, does anybody have a valid permit to do, and any licensing anyway?
No. No.
They don't have. Whether it's Joe Ferreira or Matt.
Nobody can do anything there.
They don't do, and they can't.
And, not, only because, they, well, they can't because the town won't let them. What if, if say, you know, a miracle happened and they got their shit together and they paid everything and then, okay, you can build, do they have?
No, they will not pull a building permit without a license.
They don't have one.
And that person that's issuing the license has to have workman's comp to, to be able to do the work.
No, because they don't have, they don't have.
And, and, it doesn't have to be them. It can be a subcontractor.
Yes.
That is using their license to propose a.
Yes, that's what he explained to me, Mr. Warhurst or.
Like the first, like the first war, I would bet, Matt didn't have the license.
Warhurst.
They probab- well, I don't know, I forget who told me at this point, they probably tried to make Matt Antonio pay the liens in the back taxes, but.
He's gonna be paying us.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's true or not.
Do you know what the dollar amount on that is?
Altogether?
Yeah, just, you know.
Uh, thirty-two thousand, not as much as I thought.
So how long does the town have those liens for? This was my question, when they said they paid the liens, how long does the town before they put it into foreclosure?
That'd be the thing.
If we put it in foreclosure, we take it and it's our pond, we don't want the pond.
Right, but, but the lot, so, and all the lots are paid for? There's no liens on any of those lots?
But, but the lots are.
There's no liens on the buildable lots.
Okay, it's just on the unbuiltable?
On the ponds specifically.
Those three.
Retention ponds.
Retention ponds.
And the twelve acre lot that is forever unbuiltable.
Wouldn't that risk over?
I'd like to know where that is.
I wanna say, it's all, we know where the retention pond is, right behind.
Yeah.
Oh. Yes.
So we can walk back there.
You wanna look at the plan?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd love to see if you have.
I actually would like to see the plan to see where that, uh, stone face.
Stone faces?
That is in the documentation, um, for, where we signed that had Mr. Lang's name on it.
I'm sorry.
That's where all of that is on, we have a copy of that somewhere.
I got.
So.
That's a nice pin.
This is from two thousand and six.
Nice, it's not like handwritten?
We can probably see where our property lines is too. So, you have the lots, this is the huge lot that he was talking about, so you have your lots up here, this is Maris Lane where you drive in.
Yeah.
This is parcel A and parcel B, and this parcel here is where the outstanding liens are.
A and B are the drainage lots.
Yeah.
And who will own this eventually? The HOA?
Right, it's under the HOA.
I guess, yeah.
It, it doesn't matter because it's all wet anyway, so.
To let.
Is it wet?
Yeah.
So you can walk back there or anything?
Oh, I'm sure you could.
You could. So I have not had a chance to review the file to find out what is transpiring.
I have cautious. Sorry.
Yeah, we took, we read sixteen C.
And this all needs to be redone too because the easement's here now.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot.
Well, this isn't the, it's not the, it's not what they're gonna redish here.
Well, that would be dumb when they do the as-built.
Yeah.
The front.
So, yeah, this would be interesting, cause we don't know where we end here.
Oh.
And so they, they never finished our property.
They never finished ours. He was gonna finish the property when he did that lot, so, cause, cause it kinda, it goes into it.
It's a great looking lot.
I know, well, it doesn't even look clo- it looks like we have more land than if this is.
Well, he needed that land to create the frontage.
To do it. Right.
So if you.
Yeah.
Right.
If you look at the frontage there, it goes from here all the way to there, that's, that's all frontage, that's what he needed to create this lot.
But look. Yeah. All I'm saying is that he, so our rock wall is here somewhere. And he was supposed to finish this piece, but he didn't because he said he would do it when he did this.
Where is the, uh, the underground?
Right.
There.
I know. Right here.
Now, on, on that lot, there should be the underground, um, uh.
Drainage.
Right, so it's gonna go here.
Oh, where is it?
And here.
Parcel B.
And over here, right? Is it, this is the irrigation pot?
Yes.
Yeah, so it goes like this, is that what you're asking?
No.
Oh.
Isn't there an electric, um.
Box.
My electrical.
Box right here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes.
Big green box.
That ninety-nine percent of the time.
Okay.
Is where the property line is going to be, is the, no?
No. If you look where mine is, it's not even close to my property line.
Yeah, in my, in ours.
But he's not most people.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fed from across the street.
Yeah.
Wow, have we just had this issue on that, on the other subdivision there? Yeah, there was one, oh, up in, uh.
So my. My power and cell data come from lot nine.
Feel free to come in and read it anytime, take notes.
Thank you.
I bought, we bought the same copy we have from.
Oh, and this is the information.
Yeah, if you read sixteen C, that's what it talks about, uh.
Yeah.
You could actually, if you wanted to, if, if it's not a problem, take the plans.
Yeah, twelve acres.
I put, we have these, I purchased them from the registered these.
Oh, perfect, all right.
I was gonna, you, you could.
Cause I knew somebody had this.
Get, get PDFs made in Riverside Art.
I have, yeah.
Okay.
I printed them all.
And she's not complaining about all the water?
Yes, she is.
Okay.
Which ones are?
So is this one, so, this one is.
How about over here too? These poor people.
So this is, this is what I'm talking about, fills up with water, pretty much all the way to here.
Yes.
They both do.
Yes.
Well, there's a pipe.
Right here.
That crosses the road.
Yes.
And that was approved by somebody.
That's probably been in there for ages.
Where's that pipe go?
Yeah, that pipe, it used to be a clay pipe and, uh, the highway department, uh, many years ago, put an eight inch.
Mm-hmm.
Plastic pipe, sleeved it.
Sleeve it, yeah.
Uh, you know, to, to, and that, I actually asked Tom if he would be willing to put the rip, some rip rap around it to.
Maybe this.
And he said he would, then I asked those guys, he goes, oh, we'll take care of it.
It was, it was.
Oh, that's a good.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Cause there is rip rap here.
Yes.
That can't figure out, goes like, it leads down and then there's rip rap on this side.
Yeah, all that is, all that is.
Yeah, we, we can't figure out why it's over here.
That, that, is that the stone?
I, 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 I've, I've found out, I've found out why it's there and it's the filter, the water from the road before it gets to the wetlands.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Okay, makes sense.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
But the pipe there has no, no, nothing at all, no protection at all, so eventually it's just gonna fill up with leaves.
No drainage of it. So. So you're telling me that, that it's pretty much, it's supposed to be taking water from parcel A, bringing it in, so you had to carry it to this pipe?
Correct.
Awesome.
Yeah, that doesn't work.
And so you, the town of Dyton is responsible for the bridge.
Joe cleaned it.
Huh?
Joe cleaned it.
No, I did not clean it, but I found it, that's.
And the pipe, correct?
Well, you took the leaves off it.
So when the road is accepted, the town of Dyton would be responsible for the bridge because it's above ground?
Yes, if.
Well, the bridge is part of the roadway, so.
Yeah, and so.
The road gets accepted.
If the road gets accepted, yes.
If the road gets accepted.
But if the bridge is falling apart, we'll never accept it.
Well, we'll just recommend not to accept it.
Now, is there any way that you can ask?
Don't confuse yourself, you're already in too deep on this boat.
Um, is there any way that you can ask for more, um, monies from them to complete some of this other work?
Well, that's what the cost of complete is about.
And that included this work on the bridge?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so that would go into the.
They were very receptive to doing any major work on that bridge.
I would assume, no, I'm assuming they bought lots that they don't work on.
These were only the guys that bought.
So five lots.
Five lots, that they're gonna put houses on.
Yeah, well, they're not responsible for that.
They got nothing to do with the road.
No, Joe Ferreira does, that's his, that's his baby.
Where's the wetlands here in reference to that bridge?
Oh, right, yes, they go right up to it.
Yes.
And you're coming through it.[1496.71]
And you come through it.
They can't backfill it.
You get, this is wetlands. Yeah, so this, actually you get a, there's a little way, cause we go and clean up the garbage from there and there is a little space, but it's.
They would have to file no matter what.
Yeah, true.
Between the berm and the.
Yeah, between the, the wall and the wetland, the, the plastic that they have up.
Yeah, and one of those, bales of hay.
Oh, that plastic, that's supposed to be, they cleared, they.
Do you know, I, I rescued a turtle that was caught in between the plastic, we're supposed to be.
This is the silt fence?
Yeah.
Yes, the conservation wants that, everything for the turtles, yet they're caught in between the, the fence, so I had to bring it.
Plastic.
So, I'm rescuing.
Really found a turtle, huh?
I did find a turtle, it was a big turtle.
Yeah, it was a big turtle.
It was a spotted turtle?
It was a big turtle.
It was spotted, it was spotted.
It was.
It was.
It was spotted, can't build on it.
Yeah.
Well, I was, I was told by Matt Antonio that that very large parcel piece of property was for the turtles.
Well, I think that's part of the problem. Correct, no, he's, he did say that original one.
So was that where you? Yep, that's what he told me.
That's what he told us.
But, I, I wonder if he talked to the turtles, the, the, the bathroom or whatever.
I think I'm wondering.
That's probably where we got, that's probably where it was, it's major problem.
No, I gotta go back somewhere on the meeting.
Little boy, oh. Oh, God, is this ever gonna happen?
No, we'll see for Christmas though, probably can buy with some, you know, gifts.
Yeah.
Cookie. Um, okay.
Alright.
So, that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, 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 no.
Just to maybe anybody.
Yes, I, 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 I'm just.
See this here.
Oh, sorry.
Um, so this is all.
I wanna. See if the.
So we can make that picture.
It's just different parts of the.
I know.
I wanna see if there was a.
But the stuff he gave us was so blurry, we couldn't read it.
A drainage.
So who's this doing?
Underground drainage in there, that's what I wanna see, if any of these points.
Oh, maybe they can go back some more to the.
Yes. Just keep going.
There are trees.
Yeah, yeah, well, those are all the trees we're gonna get?
Yeah.
That's funny.
Up in there.
Where are the lights?
It's funny.
Oh, there's a, there's a, over here, there's, right there, any of them.
Oh, see the lights we're gonna get? Look at all the trees, that's, look at, it's a lot of trees. How are they gonna put trees where the sidewalk is, is what I'm wondering, which way next to it?
They, they do, they do a cutout.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but, I wish that, I wish we could just eliminate this and have these trees go back into the, into the property line instead of this. This is nothing but a problem because as soon as these trees grow, they wreck up everything, you know?
Concrete.
Well, I think you'll have that option because.
We'll be the ones planting.
You might be.
There you go, there's some nice wetlands, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I wanna see that tank out the ground there.
I don't think that is.
That's his utility cuts across. Don't even know what the heck that's doing there.
So what's the green box next to you?